Evening, I'm Macy. Ready to go?
Yep.
When you're doing it? Yep? There?
Yep.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Nevada Community School District's Board of Education Meeting for February 5th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would seek approval of the agenda with an addition.
So moved.
Is that good? Motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Any public comment, Brian? None again. We have no information tonight, so we will move into our action agenda. First up, at 5.1, we are going to talk about our fuel tank removal quotes.
Yeah, Jason was able to secure four bids for removal. As you can see, the Unified quote is clearly the lowest and that is the one that we are recommending. We did not bring install quotes. Jason still, we've got a few. He's still trying to secure a couple more. But we wanted to get the removal quotes to you because there is a timetable there for the DNR grants, which we can get up to $15,000 for, which will essentially pay for the removal. So we'd like to get that going, get the Unified quote approved, so that we can get the DNR grant moving.
Anything to add, Mr. Sampson?
Uh, about 37-year-old tanks, they're fiberglass. Typical life is about 30 years with 40-year max. So we've been lucky so far and haven't had any leaks and would prefer to stay away from that kind of stuff. Something we monitor every, every month, so it's not like we're not checking. But our insurance, once we do remove those, we'll, well, we won't have the underground tank insurance anymore. We'll have to insure the above-ground ones, but just not as much, won't be as expensive. So that'll save the district some money there. I've been told they could last up to 50 years, but that 30-year mark is really when you want to start looking at pulling them out. So we're at 37. Just glad, I was thinking about it one day, I was like, how long do these tanks actually last? I have no idea. That's not my business. So I started inquiring and yeah, that's what I was told. And it's pretty much immediately sent an email to Dr. Gray and say, hey, we might want to start checking this out real quick. That's what we got.
So when physically would they be coming out?
Uh, probably the end of June, early July, and then we get billed afterwards for it.
Do tanks go pretty much backward?
Yeah, yeah. Not exactly where they are, but offset a little bit from where they're at. And the thought is we're going to upgrade to two 1,000-gallon tanks. Right now, we have a 1,000 diesel and a 560 gasoline. And with us sharing with the city currently, we go through quite a bit of gasoline. We could go bigger tanks, but it really increases your price to do that.
We can still, we're getting new pumps?
We still have the same pumps and everything. They're still in good shape, considering how old they are.
What are they going to do with the cavity left behind?
Uh, they will, that'll all be refilled and it'll be back to grass, not necessarily grass, but there will be a level.
You know what, what the fill is? Is it sand, gravel?
Oh, they'll put rock and dirt and gravel back in there.
DNR's trusting us this time.
Less chance of sinking and stuff. What's that?
So we're just left to assume. I hate going to the worst, but I'm also going to ask about the snow budget is later in the meeting. So we're just assuming there's no ruptures, no leakage, no seepage?
It could, yeah. It could cost more if there is something that hasn't been detected yet.
Right.
Or if there is some contaminated ground somewhere in there. That could definitely change the price, but...
Well, the sooner we get them out, the sooner we, yeah. I'm glad you thought of it.
Me too. I don't want that attic.
No.
Or the publicity, so...
The DNR grant that's listed here, is that a good chance that we're going to get something like that, or is it...
Everybody that I've talked to about it, you get it. You can apply for it.
It's nice that we can almost pay for that.
Yeah. Fortunately, to install the new tanks, it's not cheap.
Did you get any pricing on the above grounds?
Yeah, we're right around that 40 grand.
Ouch.
With the two tanks, all installed, you know. You've got to put a concrete pad.
Right.
Sorry, I don't mean to be off to the side. I'll stand up. You get a concrete pad, you know, ballast all the way around. Won't need to do any electrical, because everything's already there. New fiberglass piping from the new tanks to the, to the bottom of the old pumps, so there's some cost to it. And of course, the tanks aren't cheap, because they're double-wall tanks.
Good. Good. Anybody else have any questions? Very straightforward.
Do, do, um, do the contractors carry an insurance policy in case damage occurs as they're removing it, that they cover the cost of...
They actually got to have a guy on site monitoring everything as they go. And I think, as far as budget-wise for putting the new tanks in, we had, instead of buying a van that's coming up here, which we can afford to skip the cycle on that, that'll pretty much cover the cost of...
We've been talking about this for some time. You know, this is nothing new. It's just, this is that time, and this, and this much.
Yeah.
So... It is an action item?
Move approval of the fuel tank removal quote for the amount of $15,000 from Unified.
Second?
Second?
We have a motion in a second to improve the Unified bid for our fuel tank removals as quoted in the board packet tonight. Any further questions of Jason or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? We'll get them. So, 5.2, the Gates Conference Room remodel.
This is the area vacated by park and rec. We've kind of kicked around different ideas for use of that area since we moved in. The thing that's become clear has been a meeting space. This room is our, really our only meeting space for larger groups, and it gets scheduled more than I think we imagined that it would. Smaller meetings, Dr. Asmus and I have a conference table, but we would like to get that area, the park and rec was remodeled to fit the rest of the building. The area that was, when you walk in, would have been Sarah and Rhonda's offices. There's just a stud wall right there that can easily be removed. That would be a large, that'd be a conference room. And then Tim's office would be a separate, smaller meeting room. One of the things that we've run into throughout the year, our high school students have to do testing. They typically come over here and occupy this room. And then we have individual or small groups of students for various reasons that need to test separately. And so when that's happened, some of us have been kicked out of our offices to accommodate them, which they could then be in there. They've got two larger, two storage areas in there. One of those would be a good spot for records, business office items. The other one's a little larger, which Dave Cruz and Joe, their tech and grounds, can share that area. So it'll also allow us to get those chairs out of here. They wouldn't have to be permanently stored in here anymore, because those typically go back in another storage room that tech is currently occupying. So Dave's got quotes here for you, estimates, I should say, not quotes. We've got, I can't remember the figure, 200,000-plus leftover from the Gates bond. We're proposing that this remodel be in the $36,000 area. So we're recommending that, are we asking that we get the go-ahead to get this work done?
What would be the timeline of getting this started?
Um, I think that, weather permitting, they can start pretty quick. We've got to get the asbestos tile. We've got to get that out of there first, so... But it was relatively easy when we took over this building and we had to do that before and it wasn't really a problem.
So would all this work be contracted out or handled by staff?
It would, the labor for it would need to be contracted out. That's the 15,000.
Dave's got a small group to pick from? Has he got a yes on anybody?
Well, most of the, the rest of the building, it was done by Kerry Martin. Kerry's been over here to look at it, so I think a lot of the numbers that you see there, Kerry's helped us with, yeah.
You're not the ballpark on the square footage, do you?
I don't. Dave probably does. I can get that, though.
I can say from a student perspective, it'd be nice to have like a smaller testing space that we could use, because I've had to go all the way to the Lutheran Church to take a test sometimes. And if I could just walk across the parking lot, it'd be nicer to just stay here and still know it's just as quiet.
Yeah.
And a good testing space.
How many times have we had to do that, do we, you know?
Several. And a few, it's usually a few times a year. I think Joe's been kicked out of his office, Cody's been kicked out of his office. I was going to, and then they ended up not needing it. So yeah, it, it happens from time to time.
How many times have we had to go all the way over to the Lutheran Church?
I don't know how many times we've had to do that.
Yeah, mine was for our AP test, so I, I know that there was at least two groups of us that did it two years ago, but yeah.
We've mostly been able to use this room for the most part.
I can see why it'd be an inconvenience, but I don't, I don't feel sad that when you say it's, gets used more than we planned for, because I think that's why we took it on.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not been a...
Yeah, no sad here, so... So we might actually displace our meetings into here?
We could potentially in the future. If we wanted to move a school board meeting in there, we certainly could.
Especially those times when they've got a blood drive or something going on in here and then you get displaced to the high school.
Right.
Yeah, I was down, down with the library.
Yeah.
It's not super conducive to...
I don't mean to be rude about it, but I'm down with the library.
The... AV equipment and the cameras and stuff, would that be additional expense on top of what we see here?
Yep. A TV, I've got a TV already that we can use in there for that. Depending on how far we want to take it, if we want to do a full setup, like sitting here for streaming, that's another eight to 10,000 for that part.
You got room in your budget?
For TV, yeah?
Just asking.
TVs are cheap now.
Yeah, TVs are the cheap part.
Well, if we had meetings in there, would we need the streaming equipment in here?
It's nice to have in here, like when we did the public forum in here the other day for those bigger meetings, it was all set up in here and ready to go.
I would think we could have meetings in there in a pinch if we needed to. I don't know if we want to schedule that as a regular thing. Take your life, we had public attendance, there wouldn't be much room.
I think we've seen a trend form here.
How will it compare to our old meeting room?
Similar.
Up at the middle school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was adequate, except it doubled as a storage room.
It'd be similar, a little smaller.
Yeah, probably, probably as long, but not quite as wide.
Not as wide, yeah. But... What would it, what other, Joe's kind of got a cost number out of you. What other purposes would that kind of online presence of ability, would the school use that room for then?
As far as like...
Let's say we said, go do it. We want to displace into there and have meetings there, but we want to also put the online meeting availability to the public. I mean, what other, I guess...
In the three years we've been in here, the only times we've used this are for school board meetings. And that one public forum we had last week. We've got some smaller, like the old meeting owl that we used to use, some temporary stuff that if that's what the intent is, we want to do board meetings in there in a pinch, I've got that meeting owl that we can pull together with existing stuff. And that works fine for one-offs.
Anybody else got anything?
I'm of approval to proceed with the remaining remodel of Gates using the Gates Bond funding source.
Second?
Motion in a second to approve the conference remodel proposal totaling $35,900 from remaining balance from our bond for the purchase of Gates. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? 5.3, wrestling mat quote.
So I'm recommending approval of a quote of $14,350 for a wrestling mat that the Booster Club will then reimburse the district for.
Is this for meets or practice or...?
That I don't know, Joe, and I'm intended to ask before the meeting today. And I forgot when I talked to Mr. Smith today, because I knew that question was probably going to come. Where's it going? What's it going to be used for? Wrestling, that's all I know.
I thought we just bought a few of those, a few mats.
Yeah. Apparently, there's a need for another.
Is something that's going to show up this summer?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the lead time on that is.
Thank you to the boosters.
Yeah.
See the logo? Looks like a digital logo, line number four. So it must not just be a plain old practice mat.
No, I think just like the ones that we, we had some last summer. They had logo on them. They had our logo.
If I remember right, we've got two new purple ones. And then we've done a few tournaments where we've needed that third mat in the, the high school gym, so I think this is to replace the kind of beat-up purple ones that don't look great.
All three are being used to the tournament.
Move approval of the bid to purchase indie wrestling mat in the amount of $14,350.
Motion in a second to approve the wrestling mat quote as presented to the board tonight. And we are the fortunate district to have boosters that provided this ability. So thank you to them. All in favor? Post? Very good. 5.4, Joe, I expect you're up. Security quote on technology.
Good evening, everyone. So as you know, we have been working with statewide security grants for $50,000 for each school building to upgrade security in each building. It's kind of been a slow process and painful for, for some of us. But we're, we're finally at the point that we're about ready to move forward in that. And what we're looking at doing with the majority of those, those dollars is to upgrade our card entry system at all of the buildings to one that's integrated with our security camera system. So what that'll do is when someone fobs in or tries to tamper with the door or a door gets left open, then it flags an alert on the security camera system and then we can review the footage that way. So it gives us kind of a much better picture of what's happening in our buildings at any time. With that grant, it only applies to attendance centers, so NCRC and Gates Hall are left out of that grant. So to, to make those part of the same system, that's what we've got for you tonight, is to replace the card access system at Gates and NCRC, as well as add a door buzzer to NCRC to help secure that entrance a little bit better. As Dr. Gray's mentioned here, the Gates portion will pay that from the remaining Gates Hall bond funds. And NCRC funds will pay with technology department funds.
So with approval, when would this start?
With approval, we'll probably get it in the next month or so.
Okay.
For the school year end. Yep, that's my hope. And it, right now, most of the statewide school security grant money has been unspent. So my fear is for the companies doing the install and everything this summer is going to be a pretty rough summer. So I'm hoping to kind of be preemptive with, with some of this stuff and get moving a little quicker. The companies I've worked with on this, they're going to allow us July 1 billing, so that way we can try and get the project done ahead of summer and then take the bill and pay it out of next fiscal year's money. So when we get to do the, the other three buildings, like the high school, that one's going to be much more than the $50,000 that they allowed us. And a lot of that's because the high school's got wireless locks. It was a cost-saving measure when the building was built, but they're super unreliable and to the point where they're not super safe. And we've replaced a good amount of those, but there's still a good amount left. So a good chunk of that excess that we're going to spend at the high school is replacing those wireless locks with actual hard-wired locks that are much more reliable. But then that's an impact that we have to absorb internally, since the grant money only covers part of that, but we'll budget for that out of next fiscal year, so... I'm hoping to have that one, working on some competitive bids on that one, so hopefully we'll have that one here in the next couple of weeks or so. We'll get rolling on that as soon as we can to try and beat the, the rush of other schools trying to spend that money.
I see a lot of five-year on here. Is that a life?
No, so with, with this particular system and with most software systems, you, you can, you pay a yearly cost to have the system basically and get the software. So what I like to do, if I can, and especially when I do these big projects, I'll do a five or 10-year, just because you get a much better deal buying years in bulk for software support. So then at the end of this five-year, then we'll decide, okay, I either buy another five year to keep going, or I just go down to one year, depending on kind of what's available in that budget year. But yeah, it, our current system, it's been in place at the schools since before I came, so we're 11 years old. So we've gotten a pretty good chunk of time out of it. So I'd expect at least 10 years out of, out of this kind of newer system.
I'm not sure I fully understand what, what will access to Gates Hall look like when, when this is installed?
Yep, so really it's, from the general public, it's not going to be much different. All four of the entryways are currently fobbed anyways, and we leave this door open during business hours, so it's unlocked and people can come in and out. But any of the rest of us, if we want to come in, staff, come and fob in a door and then it gains you access. So that, that'll still continue. But the big thing that we gain is when somebody fobs in, then the cameras that are looking at those doors then record that event. So if I'm trying to figure out, is, was such-and-such actually in the building? Or did they lose their fob and it went to somebody else? Or with this new system, they've got door position sensors, so if the doors get, somebody puts a rock in a door to, to hold it open, then an alert gets triggered and a camera recording event happens that we can go see who put the rock in the door. Or if somebody tries to jiggle the door, that's triggered as a, as a intrusion event, so then we get camera footage of that. So on the surface, we're not adding doors to be able to be fobbed, but we gain a lot more capability on the backend by switching systems. This new system also is web-based, so it's going to make scheduling doors for events and that sort of thing a lot easier, too. So right now, it's, it's kind of a pain and a pretty big process to unlock doors for schedules or like maintenance having to come over and unlock a building for an event or something. We'll be able to save some time and money there, being able to just do it in a couple of minutes on the web. Dave can do it from his phone, I can do it from my phone. Whoever can, can quick unlock a door or that sort of thing for events and things.
So I went to the city council meeting here two weeks ago and they were discussing the new businesses coming into town. And one of the takeouts was, for me, was that they were talking about now they have vape and monitoring equipment. And to talk to administration and our police department, that's one of the things that tends to be a frequent event.
It is. So one of the things with the vape pen equipment, I have been a little bit gun-shy on those sort of things, not a great pun, but they're not court admissible, one. So that, that's kind of a big thing is if they're not court admissible, other than triggering event and saying kid may have a vape, that, that's the first issue. Two is, just like anything else, kids are going to find a way around it, whether it's blowing into your backpack or, or other things that they're a pretty good feel-good, but for the cost, I don't know that, that you get it.
I'm not pining for these things.
Yep, and that's, my, my big thing is, I mean, you look at, we've got a lot of bathrooms, so which ones do you put it in? Well, if you only put it in some, then kids are going to figure out, you only put it in some, and then your, your usage is going to change in those locations. And then just the fact that it's not court admissible, okay, then you got to bully a kid into trying to figure out, do they have it or not? The thing says you do, but they're not 100% accurate, so... Until, until that kind of becomes a thing, I'm a little bit hesitant personally for those sort of things. And there's a lot of schools that have them and a lot of people that swear by them, but you're not sold. I, I myself am not sold.
So these are camera-based AI, like camera-based detection of like AI or what?
For, through the, the vape sensor. So it's actually an environmental sensor, so it's like a smoke alarm, basically. Yep, so it's detecting particulate matter in the office. So we tested one out, a couple, it was last year, I had it in the office. And it was about now, and I'm sitting at home and all of a sudden, my phone goes off, the vape activity was detected. Hold on a second, we only have one of these and it's in my office. Well, the janitor was in there cleaning and her cleaning spray made a cloud and it detected particulate. And because these things don't know a vape from marijuana, from smoke, from cleaning solution, it... it triggered. Um, so it, it sounds great in theory, but I think there's enough negatives to them that when you look at the cost, I mean, they're, they're not cheap and then there's an ongoing cost to them as well.
Okay, I, I, one conversation turned into a little curious.
Yep. Yep, we've, we've talked about them, um, last year and it was kind of one of those things that, yeah, it'd probably be a nice to have, but I'm just not super sold myself.
No, I don't, I don't. Oh, I'm glad, I figured if you were the guy to ask him, it would be, this would be a good time to ask, so. Thank you for your.
And honest, uh, honestly, right now, you know, you, you know where the kids vape and you can find that out pretty easy, but you start putting these sensors in places, well, then we're gonna drive them to other places where we may not necessarily know or be able to intervene and then it just becomes kind of a whack.
We have an action to take in behalf of this security quote.
Under approval of the enclosed quote for the security enhancements to Gates and NCRC, twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the proposed security quote for Gates Hall and for the, our NCRC buildings. Any further questions, Joe? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five point five, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
IASB.
Final reading of the ISB policy updates that you were provided at the last meeting. Just recommending that we get those approved and updated.
Page eleven. One, two, three, four. Fourth paragraph. And it's this is all gonna turn on the word "may." Violation of this policy by students will result in disciplinary, disciplinary action including suspension or expulsion. Use, purchase, or being in possession of tobacco, nicotine products for those under the age of twenty-one may be reported to local law enforcement authorities. So are they not a civil violation?
They are.
And we're.
We do report them.
So can we turn, why, why is it then, "may" sounds like it's a discretionary thing?
There is discretion, but we do report it.
There are no exceptions.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I approve the second final readings of the fi- of the policy primers listed in section five point five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to have our final reading of the, uh, ISBA's policy primers as listed in the board package tonight. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We've adopted them. Six, consent agenda. Minutes, bills, financials, personals, and fundraisers. You could've been milling through our pairs, your last few minutes.
Yeah, we have had some turnover. We've also had some additional, uh, students with needs moved to the district.
Particularly at the elementary level.
These are set up at the elementary, mostly the same associates stick with the same students, would be the rote through.
Um, it depends. Some do stay with their students for some time, but there may be other circumstances that would dictate that would change. Yeah.
What kind of, what was the nature of the supplies that were purchased from DMAC? For eighty-two thousand dollars? The welding shop or?
No, supplies is not a correct description of that. That's the, that's the billing for the consortium for the kids to take the application courses over Ames and Kentucky. It's nice to see our nutrition fund doing well. Page thirty.
I guess Ariana and I can speak to the drama fundraiser that's on forty-four. Um, because the shows Footloose were trying to raise money from that, which is Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Um, so they're only Iowa chapter is in Dubuque, but, uh, they've been talking with the chapter leader, president, I'm not sure exactly what she is, but she's in charge of that chapter. So we're bringing back the old crush cans, uh, is the idea and trying to sell them at the high school. So hopefully the seniors and juniors will remember that from our, our middle school days. Um, and hopefully the freshmen and sophomores will catch on to it, even though it kind of went away. When they were mid, when they were in middle school, but. Yeah, so this is part of our community engagement project, which then, um, will go towards our community engagement award for the Iowa High School Musical Theater Awards.
You concur, huh?
Yep. Like our, our original idea, like we thought about, we wanted to do something with Valentine's Day. And like the idea was originally brought up of like selling individual stems of like roses or carnations, but that was not cost-effective. Nor did we think like many high school students would really do that, just, and like we would have no idea how many to actually buy. Um, and you can't guarantee that, like, I mean, how they're gonna turn out when you actually receive them. Um, and then I think it was Taylan that came up with the idea during our thespians meeting. Taylan or, I don't.
I don't think it was me, but yeah.
So, oh, someone, um, came up with the idea, yeah, bringing back the crush cans thing. So we think the nostalgia will kind of drive people, more people to do that.
Yeah, so the slogan would be like, crush the risk of drunk driving or something like that.
How'd the pink thing go?
Oh, it was good. I guess I didn't hear final numbers since it was more on their like Rolling Stories backend things, but I know they made a decent amount on t-shirts, um.
It was really nice that, um, Mr. Struck and Mr. Bentley bought, uh, t-shirts as warm-up, uh, clothes for the game. That was really nice. So we think both of them felt super helpful.
Joe, you got any bills? Tonight?
Just one.
Pretty big one. Maybe you see, you see anything you wanna ask, question on?
Nope, I'm good.
You don't, but I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I don't take either.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda that's placed before us tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Board member comments?
Busy at school, there's been a lot of events going on. Girls wrestling, there was a ton of basketball games last week, it seemed like, and then a lot more this week. This past Saturday, we had, um, state speech, uh, at Indianas Centennial. Um, so we're hoping to get results for like all-state paring soon. But it's kind of, um, delayed because of the bomb threat that occurred Saturday in the middle of the day. So all of the Nevada groups were able to perform.
Yeah, we were, we were long gone by then. Our last group performed at ten, so I would say pretty much we were all gone by ten thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're resuming, um, competition tonight. So the pairings are supposed to come out.
Well, the nominations will be out sometime, so, yeah.
We have hosted speech in the past. We aren't doing that this year. Competition ran down.
No, our district was at Valley in Des Moines and then, uh, Centennial hosted state.
On a roll, my compliments go out to Cooper. Way to go, Cooper. Boys' basketball beating Rolling Story is no small thing. I'm sure, but yeah, it lost a lot to those people. And boosters, I can't say it enough, thank you for the mat. That goes a long ways to where you're seeing success and put your dollars through your efforts and thank you.
For AP, um, we have four seniors, including myself, that are applying for their state AP degree. So I just turned in my book to Cooper that I wrote for and came here, so. Hopefully that'll go over well.
He seems to be in the news.
Yeah. The Rolling Story game, uh, I don't go to many basketball games, but I went to that one on Friday and that was just, that was so fun. It was so electric. At like one point, uh, I think second quarter, third quarter, uh, like Struck just screamed at everyone in the student section to like just getting us hyped up and yeah, just loud the rest of the night.
Way to go, coach. Yep. That's a big deal and, and Dr. Gray, we were talking before the meeting started, just, we gotta win one out of two?
Uh, we have two conference games left, but we need to win those to secure the U.S. title.
An outright.
Get an outright title.
And that's been a good long time. So. Good luck to the boys. Good luck to Coach Struck. I don't know, are they trying to have coaches not scream at people? It's been kind of the theme that, that's ran lately.
Uh, it was, it was, it was like good, like it was encouraging, not like you guys aren't being loud. It was, be louder, so.
Well, next meeting is going to be on the seventeenth. It'll be our retreat and it's going to be here.
Here.
It's pretty interesting. It's kind of a free-flowing event, so.
That's all-state, so we're gonna hope that's all-state. We're gonna hope we will be in Ames that day.
I get it, I get it.
I hope you are too, and I hope you're not here then. And I mean it in all the right ways.
Yeah.
So. Um.
Yeah.
So if there is nothing else, good meeting, got a lot done here. I think we're gonna make some differences around the district because of what we did tonight. And I would take a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor?